So good evening to everybody. Welcome to Sherburne's first ever pre-town meeting via Zoom. I want to thank everybody for expressing enough interest in your town and your town meeting to take part in this and also congratulate you on our willingness to try something new, even if for a number of us, it's probably stepping outside our comfort zone a little bit. But I think if we all work together, we'll get the best possible outcome from this. So a few announcements. As we begin, this is going to be way more casual than town meeting itself, but still, we have to have some rules so that it will run smoothly. But a couple of announcements first. If you're planning to attend town meeting on Saturday and you have not replied to the survey on next door of the town website, if you could do that as soon as possible, that would be great. We have quite a good number of people who have said they're coming and we want to make sure that we can accommodate everybody. So if you can do that, that would be great. And just be sure that if you have already answered, that you do not answer again. So that would be good. There's going to be parking on site at the garage. There's also going to be on-street parking at Butler Street and other overflow parking at Pine Hill School. Further information on parking and anything else you need to know for Saturday will be published on the town website toward the end of the week. So just keep your eyes open for that. I would ask you to please try to arrive a bit early on Saturday. Our quorum is only 20 voters and it's our goal to complete the meeting as quickly and as efficiently as possible while still providing a good experience for everyone. So we'll want to be starting the meeting very close to nine o'clock. We're not expecting any significant delays at check-in, but since people will need to distance in the check-in line, it might take slightly longer to check in than it usually does. So I'd suggest keeping to Eastern Daylight Time on Saturday, not Sherburne time. I'm sure we're all familiar with that for this particular event. So does the town clerk have anything she'd like to add now about Saturday? Are you on, Jackie? Maybe she's not on yet. So I, you know, there'll be more information coming.
I don't think so. We'll have four check-ins and just like Mary said, please try to get there early so we can get everybody checked in as soon as possible.
Right. Great, thanks Jackie. Tonight, we'll keep to the following format. Everyone will remain muted unless you are making a presentation or asking a question or making a comment. I will read the title of each article in the form and in the order in which it's listed in the Advisory Committee report, and I will ask if the article's proponent wishes to make a presentation. As at ATM itself, all presentations will be limited to five minutes, and this will be good practice for you people making presentations, good practice for Saturday. If there is no presentation or once the presentation is complete, I'll ask for questions and comments from the audience. In order to speak, please raise your electronic hand. And when I call on you and you are unmuted, please identify yourself by name and address and state your question or make your comment. Please do not type your question or comment into the chat box. As at ATM, questions, comments will be limited to two minutes max. Please be considerate of all the others on the call and keep to this time. You will remain unmuted for the duration of any answer to your comment, but once you finish or your time is up, your hand will be lowered. And if you wish to make another comment or ask another question, you'll need to raise your electronic hand again. So are there any questions right off the bat? I see Darren with his hand up, but it's not an electronic hand Darren.
That was actually my question. How do you raise an electronic hand?
You should be able to do that through a little, you should have a in the, in the participants thing at the bottom. You can, go ahead Nat.
Yes, if you go to the participants and you see all the names over on the left. So click that, click the button at the bottom that says, do you see all the name? And then at the bottom, it says raise hand. Do you see it? Okay. When you.
I'm not actually seeing that myself.
Or do you have the list of participants down the right?
I do.
I don't think you have raised hand because you're the host. I think that's what happened last.
Okay, all right. Because I've had, I've used it before, but I don't see it now, so.
No, I think you're a co-host, so you didn't get that.
Okay, thanks Natalie.
Thank you.
You find it Darren? We good? Excellent. All right, so moving along. Article one, annual reports. Is there anyone who wants to make a comment or anything about that? Okay. Article two, supplemental appropriations for the current fiscal year. Anything, anyone wants to say there? Okay. Article three, OPEB trust fund. Okay, this, this changes how the trust fund is managed. Is Heidi on here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you have anything in particular you want to say about it?
No, it's mainly administrative option that the town can choose to follow after 2016 law changes. And there's, it allows prudent investor status, investment status, which gives us a little more range and options. And there's a little more annual reporting requirements, but mostly administrative.
Okay, great. So does any of the audience have anything they'd like to say? Okay, great. Article four, unclaimed property. This is another article from the treasurer. It's, I know that this one is having to do with how abandoned funds are disposed of or claimed by the town.
Do you want me to elaborate on that?
If you have, yeah, just a sentence or two, I mean, that'd be great.
There are two ways that property can be claimed. It's one, if no one claims it, you either have to sheet it over to the state to their unclaimed property, or if we follow this and adopt this procedure, then we can claim it back to our general funds after going through all of the routines and procedures.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, great. Article five, cemeteries. This is an article that transfers money to the, from the cemetery enlargement fund for the upkeep of the cemeteries. It's every year. Darren, where's your electronic hand? Can we unmute?
It looks like I have it. It looks like I did use electronic hand.
Oh, I do not see it.
Okay. It's showing it is up, but you guys are not doing it correctly. I actually tried to get your attention on article two, just because we're, we're outside of, when this article was drafted and actually even voted on, we were still in fiscal 2020. So I'm gonna, I need to just make a slight modification to the motion and how towns have been doing is to cover deficit from that year because it's after, obviously, July.
Okay. I'm not sure we have a deficit, but we can talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so cemeteries. No, okay. Article six, unpaid bills. Again, this is a, an article that is there every year. Anyone have anything there? Article seven, revolving funds. Again, a yearly article that enables the various groups to spend up to a certain amount of the money that they collect during the year. Anyone have anything to say about that? Okay. Eight, Article eight, stabilization funds. This has, this is the select board for the advisory committee. I don't know if advisory wants to talk about the paying back after last year's transfer out or not. Somebody from advisory here wants to say something or not?
Just tell me who, Mary.
Would be Steve Si.
Okay, hold on.
Or Jane Matarazzo, either one of them.
I don't, oh, yeah, I see Jane.
Yes, thank you from you to me. So there are two aspects to the stabilization fund authorization. One is we, it is typical for us to make an annual contribution to the stabilization fund, and this year, we had allocated $25,000 for that purpose. So that is 25,000 of the total 80,000. The other 55,000 is to replace money that was taken from the stabilization fund earlier to fund one of the police vehicles. And I don't know if Lieutenant Bento is on the line, if he'd like to speak to this.
Lieutenant Bento, are you here?
Yeah, he's unmuting right now.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Then you can talk.
Sorry about that. So yes, the cruiser was originally supposed to be in the Capitol line, and then we requested the stabilization so we could buy that cruiser the 2020 model year. If we had waited till after town meeting, it would have pushed us into a new model year. It would have cost us more money. So that's why I made that request and then that was done. So that's why it does not appear on the Capitol for the town meeting.
Great. Does anyone have any questions on that? I will say that if people are putting their hand up, I am not seeing it. So I don't know if David is seeing any or.
Yeah, I can see them all.
Okay, I can't see any of them. So maybe you should let me know who's waiting in order. Okay. Nine, the omnibus budget. Are there any comments, questions, so forth on the omnibus? This will all be dealt with on Saturday, but just wondering if anybody has anything. Article 10, capital improvement plan. Line A, portable radios. I know that Zach is out of town and he was going to try to call in from his phone. I don't know.
Zach is here.
I am here. So I'd love to just talk for a minute if I could. Thank you. So just a, just a brief explanation. We're looking to replace our portable radios. They're approximately 18 years old. Current ones that we have actually were not specified for public safety use in the first place. They're not water resistant, which is important for us when you're, you know, fighting fires and obviously using water to combat fires. They're also not intrinsically safe. We actually had two radios fail this year, one had a three alarm fire that we had in January and a second one as significant gas leak that we had approximately three weeks ago. So they certainly, they've certainly served well. Typically, these radios last for 12 years. So we've gotten, you know, about 18 out of them. So the new ones we're looking at, basically the least expensive public safety radio on the market, and they are water resistant and they are intrinsically certified. And that's, that's really sums up our request.
Okay, great. Any questions for Zach?
I don't see any.
I'm sorry?
I don't see any, Mary.
Great. Town buildings and facilities, 12730. That would be Sean.
Yep.
Do you want to say anything Sean?
He's got to unmute himself.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My signal's terrible. I have no internet at the office, so I'm, I don't know how well this is working. So the town buildings is another year in the, in the capital plan. Again, I don't have any charts in front of me because I can't open my computer, but this has been approved by capital budget. Again, I don't have the list of projects in front of me, but many of, many of the projects from the past two years are going to wrap up as the library finishes up in the spring and in and around town hall will be finished.
Are you going to have a list on Saturday Sean?
A list of individual projects?
No, you know, more or less, yeah.
You want me to?
I mean, you know, I'm just.
We typically do not do that. We really don't want to get in the weeds about which building we're painting and trim we're replacing in the middle of town meeting. We vetted this capital plan over the past now eight months. Again, I just don't have it in front of me. I can't even open my computer. Capital budget can certainly weigh in if they want.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Do we see anybody David?
I don't see anyone.
Yeah, I'm here. One of my, can't.
Who's me? Frank?
Yeah. Question Sean, is there any money in there for the library or these town buildings other than the library?
No, this is not. Am I still on?
Yes.
This is, this is exclusive of the library.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. DBW equipment. Non-roadwork related, is that in or out now Sean?
That's removed.
Okay. And roadwork related, 584, in or out?
That was removed.
Okay. And wheeled excavator.
That's, that's still there.
Okay. Anything about that you want to say?
Yeah, briefly, what we have is a piece of equipment that it's going to replace tobacco once it gets here and it's in service. But it also, it's multi-function because we, we do a lot of roadside mowing with a couple of other pieces of equipment, one of which is a whacker, which is the same machine that does the snow blowing and, and sweeping of the road edges. It can no longer function as doing the over-the-rail mowing, but the wheeled excavator does in addition to what everything the tobacco can do. So we've rented one, we rented one last year, and then of course, the, the timing, this year, we, we had to get something in because we, we didn't have spring town meeting. So we're renting an equivalent piece of equipment now. And then, but we've locked in, if we're able to purchase it, we've locked in a unit that's, that's available now for this purchase.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that? I don't see anyone. Okay, roadway management.
Again, we, this is the recurring ask. We didn't add anything to this the past couple of years, but previously, we had put about 450,000. This is funding in excess of what chapter 90 from the state funds for roadwork. So last year, we did an extensive assessment with Green International. That was briefly presented before the meeting shut down, but, but they, they mapped out the entire town. So we were kicking off the first year with, with that ask. Originally was 450, so we brought that down, but that'll, that'll continue some projects this year and roll into next year so we can start off the spring. We've already committed all of fiscal 21's chapter 90 funds. That's committed and will be spent before the end of, before the fall.
Great. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay.
This is another article that we had from many, many years ago. When we first started working on the MS4, the EPA stormwater permit. This year, basically, right about now, we finally used up what was in that original article. We got it. We got through the permitting process. We're got, we're in the year two, and there's continued work that has to be done with consulting, now testing throughout the year of the stormwater. And we're, we're into the phase where we have to start making physical, structural improvements to our stormwater assets, especially on the Charles River side of town. Because we're, we're managed more stringently because we're in the Charles River watershed. So this is to fund both our consultants that help us with the EPA permitting and some engineering in the future for making improvements.
Okay, great. Anyone have any questions for Sean on that? Okay.
You should probably unmute Eric Johnson.
I'm sorry?
You should probably unmute Eric Johnson. I'm sure he has something to say about that.
Okay, Eric. Do you have something to say?
Just to support the, the stormwater, I only repeat what I said at the last select board meeting. Look how dark I am. I'll repeat what I said at the last select board meeting because the articles, select board members on here, and this is an unposted meeting, but I believe I can repeat exactly what was said before, is that we're entering year three of a five-year permit and that Sean indicated due to the fact that we're in the Charles River watershed, we actually have additional phosphorus limitations on the, on this. And year three also requires that we do have to inspect every outfall and sampling of all the outfalls in the town.
Okay, great. Thanks Eric. And Sean, one more for you, I guess. Pine Hill access road, engineering.
So that's a continuation of the engineering that we, we've been working on. Earlier the spring, people probably noticed there was a lot of flags out. There was a lot of surveying being done all the way over to Farm Road, Lake Street, up and around the Pine Hill School, the cemetery. What we did is we split the engineering work that had to be done into two because we needed to do the, finish out the land swap in the town forest for the road that's already been half-constructed. Now, what we're doing is asking for the, for the rest of the phases of engineering to redesign the parking lot around Pine Hill and the access road out. And value engineer what's there, because of course, when we originally designed it, it was just a path through the woods. Now it's a partially constructed road, so we have to do an as-built of what's there and engineer out what exactly we need, including traffic studies and traffic counts and some existing conditions now. Once school starts up, because we know we're going to see some different traffic patterns, not just because of COVID, but once, you know, we're, we're into the school flip start time. So once we actually do get to school, we're going to see different traffic patterns because they're going in there about, I think it's 30 to 40 minutes earlier than they did. So we need to assess that.
Anybody with questions on that?
I do, Richard Robinson here. I'm afraid I don't see how to raise my hand, so if I can, I'll speak. If not, I'll wait.
Go ahead, Richard.
Obviously, this is in preparation for doing some extensive work on that road. What's the projected price tag of the actual work for which this is the engineering phase?
Well, asking an engineer to project out a price for something that hasn't been engineered, you know, is kind of a dicey thing. We know that we went out to bid on a project that was complete and ready to go, and it came in in less than, less than 600,000. So it's partially built, but that was, you know, dollars from 2012, I think. So it's somewhat anyone's guess, and it depends how much work we decide we need to do up and around the school to make it safe and flow. But nobody involved thinks we're not going to be going after several different grants to help fund it. There's numerous grants out there on the FEMA side, on the MEMA side, and on the education side for school safety improvements as well as facilities within town and safety upgrades. So the intent isn't that the taxpayers would flip the entire bill, I would hope.
Well, that would be nice. And once the, once the road is complete, is, is the idea that Pine Hill Drive is going to become one-way?
Yes. The consensus is Pine Hill will be one-way, in at the lights and out on Elliott.
And is Elliott going to need a light?
Currently, the design doesn't have a light. No one necessarily the need for it, but of course, it will be an extended school zone.
Is it, is it going to need traffic personnel at, at school drop-off time, pickup times?
Currently, it does. Again, you're asking me for specific answers to questions that I'm not, it's, it's not built yet. It's not engineered.
I'm trying to figure out how much I'm going to spend on this with the 8,000 that we're about to spend here, whether this is going to turn into an ongoing expense or whether we should just do something different.
So you want to know if operating the school is going to become an ongoing expense?
I'm wondering whether, whether what's anticipated is either putting a light on Elliott Street or having a, a traffic, having traffic personnel there at the, at the heavy traffic times. That may be a tough spot when life gets back to normal, a tough spot, certainly to take left.
Well, you know, I had this two comments to that. One, it's been at least probably five years since they've exited school buses out of Pine Hill at the lights, at a light without a police present. So I, I expect that the police probably will be there when the buses are leaving because they need to flip those buses out pretty quick to get them back towards picking the regional kids up. Two, this town has decided to not put a light at Lake and Elliott. Maple, Sawland, and Washington, the two highest crash zones in town. So I don't foresee a light at the end of that road. The engineers didn't say it was absolutely required. But again, you're trying to get me to engineer it before we're engineered. Okay. Right now, the plan doesn't have a light and it didn't before.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Mary, can I make a comment on this?
All right, who's me?
George, it's George, moral.
Oh, hi George.
Just, Richard, we've talked about this for a while and just as a parent of, my kids are out of Pine Hill now, but just having spent a lot of time up there the last few years and what a dangerous situation it is now, and to try to find a way to make this a one-way, and if it means Elliott Street, you make it a right turn only out of there or something, I don't know what it is, but an engineering study is necessary to figure out how to keep the kids safe in this town because we don't want to wait till there's a really tragic accident. Last year, two of my, two different times, my kids were stranded at Pine Hill because of accidents at the base of the hill. And we don't, we shouldn't say, oh, we don't want to spend 80,000 because it might cost the town too much money. What would really be a tragedy is if our kids are in, continue to be in a dangerous situation at Pine Hill.
Any other comments? George, let me ask you, since you're right there. Did you try to raise your hand electronically?
I did.
Did, David, did you see it?
No.
Okay. So I guess that's a continuing issue.
I raised it in turn. If you go to participants, David, when you raise your hand, your hand pops up and when you don't, you gotta look in there, I think.
I was using the app and it doesn't work the same.
Yeah, I think you gotta be on a computer and the computer.
Yeah, so I'm on a, I'm on a computer now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Jimmy, I can see it.
You can see it when I do that? Okay.
Yeah. Great. That's good to know. Thank you. Because I am having trouble, so I, I am not seeing it. So do it again, George. Put your hand up again.
There you go.
It'd just be in his little box.
Participants, a blue hand pops up next to my name.
Okay, I see it now. Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay. Pine Hill School improvements. Is there someone here from the school committee to speak to that? Okay, I guess not. So. Okay, I guess not. So does anyone have a question? I don't know that anybody could answer you, but. Anybody want a question or make a comment? Okay, moving along then. Article 11. Use of free cash. And that is transferring $100,000 to the OPEB trust fund. Does anyone have a question about that? It's an every-year article. Okay, Article 12. Apply prudent investor standard for library trusts. That is the treasurer. Heidi, do you want to speak to that?
This prudent investor standard is similar to what was mentioned on the OPEB. It's just a way that allows you greater latitude in investing some of the funds. Right now, the other one is a very constrictive 30-choice. On a standard list. And this would have to be submitted to the State House to have. Approval written to allow the library to invest the funds they way, where they want to invest.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that? See any hands? Okay, Article 13. Tax-taking deed in lieu of foreclosure. That's also the treasurer. Heidi, do you have something to say about that?
Sure, this is a piece of land that has been in tax title, which means someone hasn't paid the taxes on it. It's been accruing for a couple of years now and it borders the town's conservation land. And they have asked if the town is willing to accept it as a gift in payment of the taxes and the. There's no other current liens on it, does not seem to have any environmental concerns that are registered anywhere. And the town can then hold this. To be possibly some portion buildable or to add it on to. The conservation or some other trade in the future.
Okay, great. Anyone have any questions? I don't see any. Okay, Article 14 repayment, accepting MGL Chapter 59, Section 57A repayment of tax bills. Nancy, you want to say something to that?
Years ago, the town voted to accept Chapter 59, Section 57A, which allowed collectors to send one bill if it was not in excess of $25. A few years later, the legislature changed the law to expand the cap to 50, but instead of amending A, they created B. Sherbin accepted B and revoked the vote on A. In the municipal modernization bill, the law was changed again to make the cap $100. But the legislature did this by amending A, they repealed B. And allowed any town who had adopted A to not revoke the acceptance of the new cap. We had revoked our vote on A, so this vote will correct that.
Okay, so we'll all be good. Right. Okay, anybody with a question on that? I don't know how anyone could be confused. Okay, good. Article 16. Community choice aggregation. I know that we have a presentation on this.
Mary, I think you missed Article 15.
I'm sorry, yes. EPW. Fire and police surplus equipment revolving fund. Do you want to speak to that, George?
And put me on the spot. I was just, I can.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's an article that allows us to trade in equipment as a town and. Sorry, it allows us to. Like if we trade in equipment and get like small dollars amounts, we could put it into our revolving fund, so then the DPW or the Police Department. Or whoever, or fire can then use those funds to buy small equipment rather than coming to the town, you know. It's reusing the funds for equipment for the three different departments when they trade in equipment.
Okay, anyone have a question on that? Comments? Okay. Now, Article 16, sorry about that. Yes, Darren.
15, is it still the intention of the advisory committee to recommend no action on Article 15?
You would have to ask the advisory committee.
I guess I'm asking the advisory committee.
Does? Somebody from advisory want to comment?
Unmuted, Jane.
Okay, thanks, David. Yes, it is still advisory is intended to recommend no action. And the reason for that is that, for whatever reason, and we're not quite sure what that reason is, but somehow. We did not receive. Any notice about this article until just a few days before our public hearing. And since we had not had a chance to deliberate or, you know, debate or ask, really have discussion about it. We thought it would be best to recommend that we put that off until the next meeting. So that's why we're moving for no action.
Okay. So now we'll move to finally, sorry, community choice aggregation. And I think that Fred has a. Presentation to make and you're going to share your screen, Fred?
Yes, I'm starting to share right now. Oops, it's at the end. There we are, at the beginning. So, Mary, are we good to go? Okay, good. Fred Cunningham, speaking for the Sherbin Energy Committee. The Sherbin Energy Committee has proposed Article 16 to see if the town will authorize. And possibly offer community choice aggregation. Of electrical supply. As you see, this is about offering the town. Consumers. You know, choice in lowering costs and potentially increasing the amount of renewable energy. Used by the town. Lowering greenhouse gas, obviously. So what does this article actually do? It authorizes the select board to investigate community choice aggregation, CCA. If it's advantageous, the select board can move forward into a contract. If it's not, there is no obligation to move forward. Very importantly, if it's adopted, consumers will always have the choice. To change CCA options at any time, easily and without penalty, or to leave the program altogether and go back to Eversource. Or supplier of their choice. State law does mandate that CCA programs are opt-out rather than opt-in. And the point of that is to aggregate. The electrical usage of the entire community to enable the community to design and enjoy electrical power choice options. There is no cost to the town, which is really important. The town will work with an aggregator to structure the CCA. Get competitive bids. Promote the program if it's adopted and maintain the program over time. The aggregation broker is paid by the supplier, not by the town. This article does not make any decisions on the possible structure of a CCA or whether to enter into a contract at all. It simply authorizes the select board to investigate and potentially contract for aggregation. In no way does it obligate the town to contract driving. Aggregation, if the select board receives an input, deems it not appropriate. So why bother? What are the advantages? The major advantage is increased consumer choice. There will be more green power options, possibly up to 100% for those who choose that option. And the whole point there is to simply lower greenhouse gas emissions. Potentially better rates, although savings can't be guaranteed and I'll talk about that in a moment. More price stability because it's a longer term for the contracted rates. Billing, maintenance, customer service, that's all seamless. Eversource remains responsible for those structures. For those functions. Because the supplier of the energy is the only thing that's changing. So without a CCA, citizens are limited to the Eversource basic service. Or they can go out and find a supplier that meets their needs for renewable energy sources. Let me go back for a moment to, it's not guaranteed, the price. Savings. It's important to note that savings cannot be guaranteed. Because Eversource changes its rates every six months. While a CCA contract may be structured and typically is for a longer period of time. That means at some point, the contracted rates of Eversource may dip below the CCA rates. But over the life of the contract, however. Most enrollees in towns with CCAs have found a cost advantage and appreciate the price stability that the contract offers. So in summary, what we're asking for is a yes vote. To enable the select board to investigate and possibly implement community source aggregation. Now. Choice aggregation, the result. Is simply that we have increased consumer choice in the electrical supply. There's ample citizen opportunity through the process to review and comment on CCA programs. And the article doesn't actually require us to contract a CCA, it simply allows us to look into it. By law, and this is very important, individual consumers have the choice at any time to participate or not without penalty. So. Today, we're asking for a vote of yes on the August Town Meeting. The advisory committee has unanimously voted in favor of a recommendation on this. The article allows the town to investigate providing citizens with choice. Choice in their electrical supply, the stability of cost over the course of the contract. And the options for the amount of renewable energy each of us wants to support. There's no obligation to the town or citizens if the select board deems it's not appropriate to move forward. Over 140 towns of the 351 in Massachusetts almost have. Have entered into CCA agreements. Including many of our neighboring towns and towns of similar size. We can leverage that accumulate, this is what's important, we can leverage that accumulated knowledge. 140 towns have been through this. And have already vetted the process. By approving this article, we can begin the process. And it can take up to two years to complete. Including many of our neighbor towns and similar sizes have gone with CCAs. And we can leverage their knowledge and their processes that they've already vetted. By approving this article, we begin the process, which can honestly take up to two years. The climate's not going to wait for us and the town's sustainability coordinators are ready to work on this initiative. Between now and town meeting, we urge you to access the full presentation on the Energy Committee page on the town website. The full presentation includes costs and levels of renewable energy that other towns have already achieved. An in-depth look at what aggregation is and how it could be structured. And a series of facts that answers questions about community choice aggregation. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Fred. I see Frank Orlando has his hand up.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. One, is there some minimum number of participants for this to be effective? And number two. How does one opt-out?
No, there's no level of, you know, participation that's needed. And opt-out should be very simple. The aggregator will work with, will have a webpage and a phone number and you can simply go to the webpage, change your options. Or leave the program altogether and go back to Eversource or supplier of your choice. Or you can do it online.
Are there any other questions? I don't see any other hands up. Yes, no? Greg Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just wanted to follow up one point. I'm also on the Energy Committee. Greg Cannon, 129 Hollis Street, Sherborn, a member of the Energy Committee. Wanted to just point out one detail. Very much appreciate the unanimous recommendation in favor of this by the advisory committee, but there's one detail in the report that we need to. Underline and the advisory committee mentions that cost savings or lower rates are a potential advantage to this. And as Fred said, lower rates cannot be guaranteed. So yes, it's a potential outcome to this. But we can't guarantee that rates will be lower when all is said and done.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Anyone else? Hands raised?
Mary?
Yes. April? I heard my name. I don't see a hand raised and.
She can speak.
Okay, April Contini. Will Eversource still be maintaining the power lines and doing all the repairs that are constantly necessary?
Absolutely. Ever, the only thing that changes with community source aggregation is the supplier of the electricity. So that could be anybody, Texas Wind or whatever, whoever. The Eversource is responsible for the transmission lines, the outage, your billing. Absolutely everything that we're normally associated with, so yes.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any other hands up. Okay, thank you, Fred. We'll move on to Article 17, Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. I think Addie May is going to speak to this.
I just have one slide to share a screen. Why can't I? There it is, sorry. So the Affordable Housing Trust, I think the most important thing I want everyone to realize is. It's not, the information looks kind of detailed because there are. Three pages worth of text for this article, the housing trust. And what that is, is at the all-town meeting. Annual Town Meeting 2019. Town voted to approve establishing a housing trust. Then as a process, the Housing Partnership Planning Board members and several others in town. Got together as a working group and started looking at what the. Makeup of that trust should look like and what kind of, how did we want the charter to be written? And in that process, a number of concerns came up saying we wanted to ensure that there was extra. Oversight on any release of trust funds and in two instances. We wanted to insert the language with the. Select board approval. In doing so, then we have added extra. Checks over, above and beyond the state's. Law and that was. To come to town meeting and say, we're basically writing our version and we're taking an extra step over the, above and beyond the state law. So we approved the housing trust last year and now we are just asking for this language to be approved. Adding the additional oversight of with select board approval.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Addie May? I don't see any hands up. No?
I don't see any.
Well, I guess you're good to go, Addie May. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got to stop here.
Article 18. Remove. Section 4.9 of the ZBL Temporary Moratorium on Marijuana Establishments. This is the select board for the planning board. I think, John, you were going to speak to that?
Yep, this is John Higley, 14 Saddle Brook Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. So this article just removes the temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments. The moratorium expired and has a permanent prohibition on marijuana establishments that are not medically prescribed. So in the planning board held a hearing, we're required to report that. We held a hearing and we support the article.
Okay, anyone with questions? I don't see any hands up. Electronic hands anywhere? Okay, great. Article. 19. Amend Section 1.4.6 of the ZBL findings. John, you're going to speak to that as well?
Right, yes. And so this article simplifies the process. The description that's in the town warrant is, the advisory. Comment is just fine, so we agree with that. Same thing, I'll just say that we did consult with the zoning board. Of appeals and they suggested the thousand-foot square foot limit and so we held a hearing and we support the article.
Great, I don't see any hands on this. So, okay, let's move on to Article 20. Amend ZBL Section 4.5 Open Space Subdivision Bylaw. And I think it's Marion who's speaking to that?
Here we go. Yes. I would like to share my screen. Oh, first Marion Neutro, 25 Prospect Street, speaking for the planning board. And I shall share my screen. If you'll hold on a second, there we go. Yeah. If you can, if you can move over all the little faces and the little post. If you can, if you can move over all the little faces and the little postage stamps, you'll be able to see this. This bylaw is designed to help preserve the open space that is still privately owned in Sherburne, at least part of the open space, and is vulnerable to development at present. Because of increased demand for housing in the Boston area recently, Sherburne is one of the few towns that still has land available, and this makes us vulnerable to subdivision development. It would permanently change the character of the town if all these white open spaces that you see became conventional subdivisions that consume the entire parcel. In line with our master plan goal of guiding housing development, we propose to, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble, oh, there we go. We propose to control subdivision development in the best way that we can. We cannot prevent subdivisions. Massachusetts state law allows property owners and developers to build a subdivision if the parcel is large enough to accommodate a new road and create new frontage. So towns must provide a by right path for subdivisions, but we can decide what subdivision design shall be by right. Our current bylaws are out of date in that conventional subdivisions were assumed to be by right and open space subdivisions were allowed but require a special permit. So we're proposing a revised and improved open space subdivision bylaw that allows open space subdivisions by right. Conventional subdivisions would still be allowed where the, an open space design is not better for the environment or the neighborhood. In that case, we could allow a special permit. Now, the details are here. 60% of the property would be permanently preserved as open space. That can't be all wetland, it has to be at least half upland. That leaves 40% for houses and roads, et cetera. And here, we are going to propose at town meeting an amendment that clarifies that we will no longer, we will allow no more units in an open space subdivision than in a conventional subdivision. And this was at the request of advisory, and we think it's a good idea. The subdivision layout will be done in collaboration with the developer and with Board of Health and CONCOM to provide the best protection for the most important, environmentally important part of the land. So that means that on 40% of the land, lot size and arrangement have to be flexible. But there will be restrictions. On internal subdivision roads, there's reduced frontage, but there's still setbacks. Seen at viewscapes from our roads will be maintained by increased setbacks from existing roads and no change to the frontage requirements. So protectors, butters will be protected by increased setbacks both from their lot lines and from their houses. So our Sherburne bylaws don't control everything, only the uses of the land, housing types and dimensions. Major control is in the planning board rules and regulations, and the rules and regs define the processes for submission and review and approval as well. If we take a subdivision in Sherburne that's currently 39 houses on just under 100 acres, just over 100 acres, and envision it as an open space subdivision, you can see the space that's preserved for trails, bike paths, and common enjoyment. The lots look small here, but in fact, they're just under an acre. So a group like this would be kind of like the Ivy Lane neighborhood. There are advantages, first of all, for the developer, the infrastructure costs are less, and town boards will cooperate in the layout. Marketing advantages, it's open space access for most or all of the participants, of the buyers. Buyers have kid-friendly neighborhoods with family houses, plenty of space, but guaranteed access to nearby open space and easier land maintenance. Resale value has been shown to be maintained in such subdivisions over time by a series of studies over the last two decades. For the town, besides the environmental advantages, the DPW cost will be less and the tax revenue will be maintained because these properties tend to retain their value because of access to open space. So overall, we think that into the future, this bylaw will direct subdivision development in a way that's best for the town, and it preserves the things that we love most about the town, the open space, the trails, and the rural environment. Thanks.
Thanks, Marion. I am looking here. I do not see any hands raised. Give you a minute? Yes, I do. John Higley.
Thanks. John Higley, 14 Saddle Brook Road, Planning Board. There's been concerns about, about this in terms of making both of them, by both open space and conventional subdivision development by right. And the planning board has talked about this at length and really feel it's in the town's best interest to not do that. The real key here is allowing both by right would essentially allow the developers to make the decision even with town's best long-term interests. It's, it would be inconsistent with our master plan to guide housing development, to preserve the town's semi-rural atmosphere. It's our job, everyone here, everyone in town meeting, to look after the long-term interests of Sherburne. And I know that that's what we're all doing. I know that. We're all on the same page in terms of the goal. So it's really, really, it's a question long-term. Do you want to have conserved open space that's protected with conservation restrictions years from now? And if we don't pass this bylaw and make it so it's the, that open space is by right, so we change direction, then if we don't do this, then we'll have, we'll have less chance of having that open space in the long-term future. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Frank Orlando? Frank?
This is Frank Jenkins.
Frank Orlando has his hand up.
Yeah, I didn't, I had to get off mute. Sorry. Frank Orlando, 18 Woodland Street. How does the smaller lots address the setbacks and requirements for wells and septic?
May I address that, Mary?
Sure.
Yeah, we have worked with Board of Health closely on this. We agree with Board of Health that whatever septic and wells have to adhere to their standards. So the smaller lots, though, could be placed in an area of the property where the soils are more amenable to wells and septics. And the Conservation Commission, we also have worked with to make sure that, we work with them to make sure that we're not going to damage wetlands in any way. So basically, a lot of the details of how this would work are in the rules and regulations of the planning board and the Board of Health. They've helped us revise our rules and regulations to assure that these subdivisions will be safe. And I should say, if they're not safe on a particular parcel, then either a parcel cannot support a subdivision, or we could, we could give a special permit for a conventional subdivision.
Thanks, Marion. Frank Jenkins, you have a question? Unmute yourself, Frank.
Okay. I just wanted to support the planning board in this article. I noticed that, however, the advisory voted five to three in support of the article, which is, which is good. And I did read the minority opinion, which I do respect. It is a change in the way the town has approved, has developed open space. And I look back at those communities here in town, Old Orchard, McGregor Drive, and so forth. And those are all houses on two acres or more, standard frontage and so forth. But I can envision with this new bylaw that would be a little more creative, maybe smaller lots, houses maybe grouped together because the land that is, where they're located is a better land for septic and well. And open spaces is portions of the land which perhaps are not good for development. So I think this shift from traditional open space, standard across the board, 28-foot roads, curbs, setbacks, frontage to 50 and so forth and so on, will give us a little more opportunity to vary how our communities will look and accept roads that are less than 28 feet within the development and setbacks which may be a little less than they were under the conventional zoning. So I would support this article. Now, advisory did have some objections to it. I'd like to hear what their objections were.
I'll call on somebody from advisory to speak, and Marion, I see your hand up, so I'll get to you afterwards.
Yeah.
That's okay. Does advisory want to comment to Frank?
Jane, Jane and Stephen are muted.
Yeah, I guess, well, Jane, because Jane is here, and I apologize for being late, but Jane was one of the authors of the Minority Report, so if Jane, if you wanted to speak to it, you can.
I'm happy to do that, and I, I think the Minority Report really encapsulates the concerns that those of us who had voted against this had. One being that although these developments appear to be holding their value right now or having equivalent value to other traditional national subdivisions, that may well be, since most of these developments are fairly new, that there is a bump associated with, you know, with, with new construction. And so we had some concerns that over time, these developments may not hold their value to the same extent. And if that were true, that could be a significant problem for the town's tax base because 60% of this land, because it is open space, will, will not be taxed at, you know, at regular rates, as it would be if this were conventional development, it would be taxed at much lower open space rates. So we had some concerns about the tax base. We had some concerns that the, that this might sort of take Sherburne out of its sweet spot, if you will, in the, in the real estate market, in that Sherburne is, is not really a town where either young singles or empty nesters necessarily flock. I mean, we, our traditional appeal has been to young families who appreciate the excellent schools and who appreciate, you know, having those big backyards for, for play outside. So we had some concerns that if we significantly changed the way we do our development, to have smaller lots, houses closer together, that that could be, have a, have a negative effect on the appeal to young families, which has been our sweet spot traditionally in the, in the marketplace. And then we also had some concerns that, given these risks and the fact that the open space would not be open to the public of Sherburne, it would still, unless, unless the owners of the land decided to deed it to the town or decided to deed it to some sort of a conservation organization that allowed open space, this would still be privately held open space, open only to the members of the homeowners association or, you know, whatever the, the ownership method would be there. So we had some concerns that the risk to the town was not adequately being counterbalanced by access to town residents for the open space. I would say those were the primary concerns that we had. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Marion, and then Addie May?
Right. Well, there are, there are several concerns embedded in that, and I, your, your concerns are very well taken, Jane, and your, your concerns in the past have led us to really examine things carefully, and we've made some changes that I think were, were very, very much strengthened the bylaw. So we thank you for that. But I want to address the, your, your remaining concerns. First of all, let's talk first about the density in the small lots. In fact, subdivisions like this, I'm sorry, I have a phone going up in the background, subdivisions like this elsewhere don't have smaller houses. The kind of subdivision that we're envisioning and codifying with this open space bylaw will allow houses at least as big as houses already in Sherburne. Some of these have bigger houses, so they're very family-friendly, and there's still room for lawns. It's not like the typical cluster that you expect near a town center for older or single residents. Not at all. These are designed for families. And as far as the tax revenue, it's not a, these subdivisions are not a recent phenomenon. They've been built since the 1980s. In fact, the first study comparing open space and conventional subdivisions, tax-wise, evaluation-wise, in a controlled scientific way, was done in 1999. It was published in 1999, the Stanford study. And there've been others, at least three or four others since, that have shown that these developments really do retain their value right up to the present day. So that's already well over 20, 30 years that these have been around. So it's, it's really not something that's rapidly changing. And if it were changed in Sherburne in the future, well, we can certainly revise it again. I mean, Carlisle has had three revisions to their open space subdivision bylaw, and we certainly will keep an eye on it. So what else did you talk about? Public access. You're right. If it's a private homeowners association, the town can't dictate public access to private land. However, and, and we certainly would want public access to the greatest extent possible, homeowners associations have a, have a, an interest in allowing public access because it will give them connections to other trails and make them a friendlier place for the town as a whole. And also, this planning board can negotiate quite a lot of things during the subdivision process according to our rules and regulations. For example, if it's a private or homeowners association, we would negotiate trail connections if it would allow better trail access to the rest of town. Even if it's donated to the town and everybody has access, or to a conservation organization and everybody has access, the taxes would not be lost by that because the value of these houses tends to be as high or usually higher than a conventional subdivision because people just love having direct access to open space. What else have I forgotten, Jane? Help me out here.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess, the planning board's been looking at this for quite a while and really did spend a long time trying to address concerns that were brought up two years, that were brought up two years ago, and throughout the various hearings, a lot of feedback. And what, as we studied open space subdivisions and bylaws and looked at lots of other examples, we did see that there's a lot of examples that have lasted a long time and have done well and are pretty exciting. And a lot of times, they are called conservation subdivisions because they do preserve the open space. And also, there's some really great examples out there with houses that are every bit of, you know, the typical 3,500 square feet, whatever, 2,500 square feet, but they're, they're not tiny little houses and they're not super close together. As Marion pointed out, a lot of these lots are, in the example, they're just under an acre, which is what you have on Ivy Lane. And with good site plan, what is really nice about this type of design and construction is it preserves a lot of the natural landscape. So it allows a lot of the, the look and feel of the open space that we have, which includes wooded areas and fields and just natural landscape and trees as buffer zones around near the street front that we like and we look to as defining Sherburne. So if anything, this helps create more neighborhoods that are in keeping with what we think of as Sherburne. what we think of as Sherburne. And as far as safety for kids, there's a lot of benefits that people are looking for ways for kids to be able to get on their bikes and go to a neighbor's without being on a busy road. So having houses a little bit closer, there's a reason Ivy Lane's the most popular place to be on Halloween.
Okay, thanks, Addie May. Are there any more questions, comments? I don't see any more hands up.
Mary?
Yes, Frank.
Back to Jane's comment on impact on taxes. That is a very good point you're making, Jane. And I think everything we do in town is trying to ensure that we don't take property off the tax base. But the open space portion of this development, hypothetical development, would be unbuildable. So the value of it on the tax rolls would be very low. And whether it's owned by the homeowners administration, the homeowners association, it would be taxed. If they gifted it to, say, Sherburne Rural Land Foundation, it would be off the tax base. Or if they gifted it to the town, it would be off the tax base. But I think, as Marion, through her research, has pointed out, that the total tax generated by this development, either with conventional or with the open space zoning, would be essentially the same. In fact, it may even be higher with the new open space zoning, because a lot of families I know back in the 80s and 70s, they wanted to come to Sherburne because of two-acre zoning and large lots and so forth, and raise their kids, and the husband worked, and the wife cared the family, and they were able to do things of that nature. But now, a lot of couples with children, they both work, and they don't want to necessarily move into a piece of property that's going to require a lot of maintenance. So something smaller than two acres might be very attractive to them, and they may pay a premium price for it. I know that is the tendency today with working couples, with families. So it's something we don't have the exact, the exact answers to, Jane, but they are certainly things to consider. And I think, as Marion pointed out, if we see that we're getting short change, we would probably make changes to the zoning.
Thank you. Frank, anyone else? John Higley.
Just to add to that, there's, there's a lot of, of developments in, in Sherburne and Dover with houses that are closer together than, than other lots. Cider Hill and Barricad are examples. In Sherburne, there are several in Dover. In a, if this, in this bylaw, if a two-acre, if it's in a two-acre zone, we'll end up with about one acre lot, and a one-acre zone would end up with about a half acre lot. Looking at lots, those sizes in, in Natick and Wellesley, they would be huge. In, in Medfield, there's a lot of expensive homes and on, off of Pine Street, there's several developments there. They're all over a million dollars, and they're all on, on less than one acre lot. So the size of the house and the value of the house is not suffering by having a smaller lot. Another offset is that for the developer, costs less if they, to develop, because they have to spend so much paving, paving a wider road, a long, wider road. It's much better for the environment to have a smaller road, and it saves the town money. So that's an offset that creates a better return on investment. Also, it costs less to maintain that road, to plow it and keep, keep the paving in good condition. Thanks.
Wassim? Wassim? I see your hand up. Unmute yourself.
Oh, sorry. Two mute buttons. Okay, thank you. So, so one thing I want to, one concern I have is with smaller lots, and we have septic in town, like, take, take a one-acre zone, for example. We have the septic, we have the house, and there's enough space to have, let's say, wooded areas between neighbors and so on. If, if you take that and bring that to a half-acre zone, and again, we have the septic that needs to be clear, and the house, and so on, and suddenly you have, like, houses that are really, there's no kind of buffer between these houses. Yes, there may be some open space somewhere else in the development, but now, if you look at between these houses, there's almost no wooded areas or anything. And, you know, so that's one, one thing I would, I would point out. The other thing is, I am one of the people that actually looked at, you know, wanting a larger lot. So for me, having a larger-sized lot is of value. And then the, 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 I think I'll leave it at that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thanks, Wassim. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands up.
Oh, no, Michael.
You see my hand?
Michael. Let Michael go.
Go ahead, Michael.
Up there. Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. I support it in the sense that I feel comfortable with the town putting its finger on the scale, so to speak, for this kind of more open space kind of plan versus more standard development. If the market prices, if the market turns out to really want the other type, I have, if I understand this correctly, then, then developers will, will go the extra mile to do the other style, if the market diverges so much. I mean, you're worried about how it holds value over time. It seems that it does hold value, but if things change, it's not like the other option still doesn't exist for people to pursue, if there's such a spread in the, in the value of what people are willing to pay for it. The developers are not, they're not there to, to be so generous. They'll figure out what makes the most sense in that sense. So, but I think it's good. It has some other values for the town as, as basically being the first choice, but it doesn't preclude the other ones. So therefore, I don't think it's such a, it's not hamstringing developers that greatly, in the sense that, sure, it's cost a little bit more to do the other route, but if it's that kind of spread, let it happen. But so, I support it. I'll leave it at that.
Marion, I see your hand is up.
I was just going to quickly respond to Wassim. I really understand. Some people do want the, the full open space land, three or four acres, or two or three, as it is in town. That's fine. And there are places in town where one can buy those houses. But this just provides another alternative and a better alternative for the open space of the entire town. Thanks. That's all.
Okay. I do not see any further hands up. Okay, great. Then I'll move on to Article 21, amend ZBL Section 4.9 inclusionary zoning provisions. And I think that's you, John, again? John Higley? Is that you again?
If I unmute it, it is.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So let me see. I'm going to share my screen here. Somebody tell me they see this.
I see it.
Right. So Massachusetts badly needs low and moderate income housing. So they passed Master Law 40B to give incentives to developers to build affordable housing. And they also give incentives to communities so that when they reach 10% affordable housing, they can control, and if they want, reject 40B proposals that don't fit their housing plan. And Sherburne has a housing plan, and we want to add affordable housing. And this bylaw gives us a way to do that, so that when we get to 10%, we'll be able to stay above 10% and in control. It also gives new developments of two or more houses to either build or help fund affordable housing. And it requires that any affordable housing that's built meet state standards and remain affordable. Sherburne has 34 affordable homes now, and when the current three 40Bs that are in, in, in development, when they're completed, we'll have 3.7%. Two projects in the works on Coolidge Street could add enough affordable homes so that we'll be over 10%, with a little room for some variation in the forecast. If we add this affordable housing bylaw now, then as market rate homes are built, we'll be able to add enough affordable homes to keep us over 10% for a long time. Let's take a look and see how it works. Any development of two or more houses has to contribute to affordable housing. The developer that wants to build two to five homes can make a payment in lieu of building, building an affordable home. Instead, instead, they can make a payment. For developments of six or more homes, the developer is required to add 15% more affordable homes. And if that 15% is a fraction of a half or, or greater than the required number is rounded up, and if it's a half, less than a half, then a payment in lieu is made to the Sherburne Housing Trust. The bylaw does give the developer some options. Developer can build affordable housing onsite or offsite, or make a payment in lieu to the housing trust. Whether new rehab or multifamily, the affordable housing has to be consistent with the homes in the neighborhood, and they all have to comply with Sherburne's local bylaws, rules, regulations of Board of Health, Conservation, and Planning Board. So let's take a look at an example. If the developer wants to build 10 market rate units, the bylaw requires the market rate units be multiplied by 15% and, and to get the required number of affordable houses. So in the, in this example, one and a half units are required. That's a fraction. It's rounded up to two affordable units. So in this example, the market rate units are $850,000, and the affordable units are $250,000. Bylaw specifies how the actual prices for both of those things are determined. The payment option is the difference between the market rate and the affordable unit, which in this example is $600,000. So the developer can decide to build the two affordable units, or pay 1.2 million, or build one and pay for one. It's the same for any size development of six or more. The bylaw defines a slightly different formula for developments of two to five homes, to determine a proportional payment in lieu. So will the added cost of affordable housing push a developer to 40B? So, and the answer is, if we're in safe harbor, then, and over 10%, then 40B won't be an option. And 40B developers want to build high-density housing so that they can build, so they can, they can build under the state laws and not under our local rules and regulations. We've had several 40B developments without inclusionary zoning. The bylaw allows the developer to build or refurbish affordable housing offsite. They can't do that with a 40B. And they can make a payment in lieu that they can't do, you know, with a 40B. It may seem expensive for the developer, $600,000, though, is, that's about what it costs to buy or build an affordable home. And this allows affordable housing to be built without increasing our taxes or having funding like community preservation, which we don't have. A Cityscape journal paper published in 2017 said inclusionary zoning is popular, it's a popular shift to fund, to funding, to get the developer to fund it, and recommends increased density, like allowing duplexes, which this bylaw does. A 2010 Rappaport Institute paper studied 99 communities in metro Boston that have added affordable housing, and said about a third of them use inclusionary zoning like this bylaw that's mandatory, about one-third use of voluntary incentive zoning, and about one-third use both of them. Developer can find, building or refurbishing offsite can save them a lot of money. So how will this change Sherburne? Well, this will protect Sherburne from unwanted change. And we want to add affordable housing that fits our plan. This is a way to fund affordable housing so we can stay in safe harbor. It doesn't apply to tear downs or rebuilds. It doesn't apply to new single home construction. It's a way to keep us over 10% and in control of unwanted developments. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Any comments on this? I, let's see. I don't see any hands up.
Frank Jenkins? John, the Affordable Housing Trust, which we talked about earlier in an article, would be the recipient of these funds, right? The payment in lieu.
Correct.
And the trust then would be responsible for making funds from the trust available to support affordable housing in any way, such as Leland Farms. They have 10 affordable units. And if one of those units came on the market, and they were not able to find a qualified buyer within the 90 days or whatever the period of time is, the Affordable Housing Trust would have the opportunity to purchase that unit and keep it affordable, and sell it to a qualified buyer maybe four, five, six months later, when one comes back. Is that true?
Correct. Yes.
So this gives us a lot more flexibility in maintaining our 10% once we get there. And I think this is critically important, because the town is going to grow. But we want to make sure we grow in proportion to our obligation to make sure that we maintain a 10% of our housing units to be affordable.
Any other comments? I don't see anyone else's hand up.
Hey, Addie.
Addie May here. I just wanted to say that this is, as John mentioned at the start, this is in our housing production plan that was approved, state-approved two years ago. And it's a tool in the toolbox that has been long needed by our town, and many other towns have this. So we are hopefully adding this to, we have another option to help us keep control of 40Bs.
All right. Anyone else? Apparently, not all the hands are showing up on my screen. I'm not sure why. But if there's no one else. Okay, moving on to Article 22, Coolidge Crossing. And that is the select board. Does somebody on the select board want to talk to that?
I can, Mary.
Okay.
Yeah, this is an article for, to grant, this is a, hold on, sorry. This article authorizes select board to grant a non-exclusive easement to, for water and sewer purposes, under parts of Coolidge Streets, Bean Street, and Kendall Ave, if a development's approved at Coolidge Crossing. This is necessary as the developers will own the lines, because Sherburne, if this development moves forward and they are getting water and sewer from Framingham or Natick, then we don't want to own the lines, because we don't want to have to maintain them. And Framingham and Natick don't want to own them if they're not in their town. So the, the developers would own these lines. So this is simply giving us the mechanism to grant an easement to the developers. So if they need to maintain their lines, they can get to them. This is in no way approving any projects. That's still very premature, but this is something that would be necessary if down the road, there, they are approved, then this would give the authorization for the select board to approve it.
Any questions on this? I do not.
Frank Jenkins? That's interesting. If the developers own the lines, and I can understand why, do they then have the right to allow others to tap into those lines?
No, because we're going to negotiate an intermunicipal agreement with both Framingham and Natick. That would restrict the, any access to those lines. That would be, the intermunicipal agreement will also be signed by the developers. So they're not going to have the right to let anybody tap into it. It's, it's a part of the intermunicipal agreement that would have to be approved by Sherburne, Sherburne and Framingham, or Sherburne and Natick, in order for anybody to tap in.
Would if any problems occur on Meadowbrook existing homes, with their well or septic, maybe contamination from?
Yeah, that's, you muted yourself, Frank, again halfway through, but I think I know what you're saying. The, that is a concern with the plume from general chemical of the Meadowbrook neighborhood. And hopefully, by having that line there, there would be some mechanism in an emergency situation that we could allow, you know, residents to tap in. I think that's something we've talked about. It's not going to be allowed, but it would initially, but it would be at access to that in an emergency situation.
Any other hands? I do not see any. Okay, great. So Article 23 is the citizen's petition. As I understand, that has been withdrawn. Is that correct?
Hey, Mary. Steve Leahy here. I can confirm that the petitioners of the Article 23 have chosen not to pursue this since sometime in late February, early March.
Okay, great. Thanks, Steve. So that about wraps it up. And hope that this was helpful to people. And got a little dress rehearsal in for the people making presentations. And we're looking forward to seeing everyone on Saturday. And we're looking forward to seeing everyone on Saturday morning, bright and early, nine o'clock. Thank you all for joining and have a good rest of the evening.